Seven o'clock, so I'm gonna go live on YouTube, everyone. And we are live, so you guys may begin a meeting whenever you'd like to.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. It is seven o'clock, and I'd like to call to order the regular meeting agenda of the Lion Township Board of Trustees. It is Tuesday, July 6, 2021. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice.
Okay, thank you. Kelly, could you please call roll?
Sure. Lisa Blades.
Present in Lion Township.
Patricia Carcony.
Present in Lion Township.
Michelle Cash.
Here in Lion Township.
John Dolan.
Here in Lion Township.
Christopher Enlow.
Here in Lion Township.
Sean O'Neill.
Here and in Lion Township.
Robert Swain.
Present in Lion Township.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Anyone like to make that motion or have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. I'll support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're gonna move on to the approval of the agenda. I do have one addition to the end, that would be G in new business. It would be a resolution dissolving the local state in of emergency to protect the public peace, health, safety, and general welfare COVID-19 and Temporarily Open Meetings Act procedures effective August 1, 2021.
I'll move the approval of the agenda with the addition of that item, which will be G.
My agenda, it will be H.
Oh, no, it's G. Sorry, I think there was a, if you go online, they had removed.
Mine says revised here.
Yep, so C on your agenda was probably removed, so.
Oh.
The original one had. A new business, yep.
Okay, that was considered.
Yep, that was removed, that was the revised. Do you have a?
Actually, I think that one stays on. It was the diesel tank.
Right, that's what.
So this is the new one I have here, I think.
Okay, so Patty didn't get an update, sorry.
Yeah, I got the revised one. April put it on my desk.
There's two.
Two revisions.
Okay.
Yep, sorry about that.
So it would be G.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, did we, we had a motion. Did anybody second that?
I will support.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're gonna move on to announcements and communications. Does anyone have anything they'd like to communicate?
Sure, John, if I could start. I just wanted to give a quick update. We had our SEMCAG meeting at the end of June, and the focus of that session was on the American Rescue Plan Act funding, where they gave us an overview and the anticipated dollar amount that each municipality's projected to receive, and Lion Township is projected to receive about $2.2 million. And so the focus of the whole session was basically, what can you use it on if you choose to accept it? And, you know, I assume that you would want the money. But they talked about sewer work and broadband internet for some of the more rural communities, and any losses that you may have had because of COVID in terms of your funding levels. Unfortunately, nothing can be used for roads, but I think we probably have plenty of sewer projects that we have our eyes on. So that might help us out in the long run. And then, the second thing too that came out of the SEMCAG meeting is we will have to appoint a alternative delegate. I'm our, I'm still gonna be the primary delegate, but with Tina, no longer with the township, she was our alternate. And so I guess I just wanted to put that bug out there for anybody who wants to potentially volunteer. I've been able to make pretty much all the meetings, so there's no, no real pressure, but you're always welcome to come as an alternate as well, so. Maybe next month we can mull it over and see if somebody wants to volunteer.
That sounds like a great idea. Anything else, Chris? Oh, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna add something if Chris is done.
Yes, please, go ahead. Are you done, Chris?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Lisa.
I just noticed in the, in the news today that Governor Whitmer has called for allotings $150 million in rescue funds for Michigan local parks and trails, and grants could be available, so that money would be used, potentially used for parks to be more accessible, to build playgrounds, pavilions, boardwalks, and the funding could improve and connect regional trail systems. And so I was kinda hoping to, if Brian had not seen that in the news yet, maybe put a bug in Brian's ear or even in Leslie's ear, and if that does pass, to get us maybe at the forefront of being ready for any potential grants, because I think, you know, when they say access, to make parks more accessible, the first thing in my head was crossing the drain at the 11 Mile Park, or kind of connecting and doing some more improvements to our rail trail.
I think, I think we, I seen that also, and, and thank you for that, Lisa, and hopefully Brian and Leslie keeps their eyes open, because I think they do, they do a good job. They send me a lot of things about grants, and I know they try to go after all of them, but it's always great to have that brought up. I appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to just make a quick mention that I sent out tax bills on June 30. So if you're out there and you haven't gotten your tax bill or your informational copy, because your original tax bill went to your mortgage company, please contact the treasurer's office. They are due September 14 without penalty or interest, so they're in the mail. A love note that I send twice a year.
Always a good note. Okay, anyone else? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move on to call to the public. This is where the public can call in on non-agenda related items, and keep it at two to three minutes, please. Also state your name and address for the record. Jacob?
Yeah, so if any members of the public would like to speak to the board, it's star nine to raise your hand. And again, like Mr. Dolan stated, please take your, please introduce yourself by your name and address, and please try to keep your comments to about three minutes at max. And again, it's star nine if anyone from the public would like to talk to the board. I'm not seeing any hands, so you may proceed. I can let you know if one chimes in later or anything. If you guys wanna go back.
We'll give it a couple seconds, just in case. It's like the. Still seeing none, Jacob?
Nope, you guys can proceed if you'd like to.
All right, then we're gonna close call to the public, and we're gonna move on to reports. First report is the DDA report, and Tina is not with us anymore, as we all know. We have actively been looking to rehire a DDA director. Not a lot of applicants have come forth, and we've interviewed a couple, but we're still, we're still working on it. Brian has been picking up some slack, and Leslie has, and we'll get through it, but we are actively looking for a DDA director. Tina was a pretty, pretty important person here, as we're all finding out. But we are looking, and unfortunately, I, I don't have anything else to give you on the DDA report, as she, she always did. But, that being said, we're gonna move on to the fire. Chief, anything in the fire?
Yeah, first, it's a lot of pressure being, having to be ready without Tina's report. It usually gave me plenty of time to get prepared, but not a whole lot going on. Thankfully, it was a quiet fourth weekend, and everything is going pretty smoothly. For the year, we're up 45 calls from a year ago at this time, and, and that's basically it.
Okay. Any questions for chief? All right, we're gonna move on to lieutenant.
Yes, just a quick incident to share. This is actually good news. You know, you know, we've been hit with a lot of construction site thefts, so last month, my guys were able to actually apprehend one of these guys, and we worked in part with, with the manager at the construction site. They saw an individual, I mean, middle of the day, he just pulled up and started loading up construction equipment into his, to his car, and the manager was able to follow him and get the police on the line, and we apprehended him and recovered all the equipment, and more importantly, we charged the guy with, with a misdemeanor, largely from ER, so that's, the guys did a great job. That's, that's all I have for reports right now.
Okay. Any questions for lieutenant? All right, we'll move on to the planning commission. Patty, anything for the planning?
Yeah, we only had one meeting in the month of June, and that was Monday, June 28. And we actually only had one agenda item, which was under new business, and that was the the Hindu, Hindu temple, and it was like, it was like a conceptual review, and the planning commission discussed and gave their opinions, and there is going to be a public hearing coming up on July 12. And the other thing was the master plan, and Brian just gave us a few things to think about, and, but that was our meeting. That's it.
Thanks, Patty. Any questions for planning? All right, we'll move on to ZBA. Lisa, anything, ZBA?
Yes, at our June 21 meeting, there was an applicant seeking a variance from Section 14.01 E2C regarding recreational vehicles and where to park or store those vehicles. And the application, the applicant sought to park a variance in order to park his camper in his front yard, and that variance was denied. And we do not have a meeting in July.
Right. Any questions for Lisa? All right, we're gonna move on. Robert, anything from the park board?
The only thing I wanna highlight is that we did have another resignation, and so we are now looking to fill two positions, if anyone is interested or would like to nominate someone.
Okay, that's not good.
It's, it's not the best situation, but we're doing what we can.
All right, well, thank you. Moving on to water. I don't know if Ed's in the room or not. Is Ed Keston in the room at all?
I didn't see him.
No, I don't believe he is.
Okay, well, I figured he'd wanna be the one to. I wanna let the whole board know that we finally got written approval from DEQ for water softening. And I was really excited about that, and I thought Ed would wanna give that news to you. He's worked so hard on it. And we actually got the plans, the design, and everything approved, so it's in process now. He's going through the ordering and, and all the things that takes, and unfortunately, we're in the time now where everything takes forever to get, you know, the steel, everything is gonna be backordered forever, but he's gonna do all the prep he possibly can and be absolutely ready for when them tanks show up and when that equipment shows up to go ahead and put it in, so. We are on the move now. This, this was a big hurdle, and I hope the board understands how hard we've worked on this. This is a big day for us, and it's a big day for Lion Township. We're, we're absolutely getting softening finally, three and a half, four years down the road. But any questions about the water? Anybody I can answer. We, oh, the, this big storage tank, we finally got Edison hooked. We're getting water samples now that should be online, maybe possibly by the end of this week, we're hoping. So that's moving pretty good, too, so we should have that. And by the way, the water has been excellent. The, we've been, we've been serving up some really good water, and we've had no problems this year whatsoever. Very, very few calls, if any, for any problems with the waters. One of the best years so far ever started. So it's really, really great news for the township. Any questions? All right, then we're gonna close the reports down, and we're gonna move on to unfinished business. The first one is a consideration of the approval of the Water Service Agreement between the Township and Polty Homes, and I know we put this on the table for a good period of time, and, and we're really hoping that everyone's had a chance to go through this and, and answer all the questions that they needed answered through our consultants, and I think it's in really good shape, but that being said, we're all very familiar with the agreement, so. Any questions about it? I'd like to open up the floor. Okay. That's encouraging.
I think, I think that I was able to address all the questions that the various trustees had raised before, so I think we're in pretty good shape to move this for approval.
I can say that the things that I had questions on or items that I had concerns about were addressed, Carol, so.
Thank you, Sean.
I'm set. Thank you.
Okay, then if everyone is in agreement, then a motion would be ready to.
So I'll make a motion for the approval of the agreement of the Water Service Agreement between the Township and Polty Homes of Michigan.
I'll support.
All right, we have a motion and a support. Now, Kelly, let's call this one by roll, please, please.
Sure. Christopher Enlow.
Yes.
Sean O'Neill.
Yes.
Lisa Blades.
Yes.
Michelle Cash.
Yes.
Robert Swain.
Yes.
Patricia Carcony.
Yes.
John Dolan.
Yes. Okay, thank you very, very much for that. We're gonna move on to our.
Thank you very much.
Unfinished business. I'm sorry, Joe.
I said, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
He, he's worked hard in this whole process, as well as everyone else. It's been a long one.
Yeah, one down, one to go, right, Joe?
Right, right, exactly. Thanks, again.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to our second unfinished business consideration, adoption of the ordinance for the Charter Lion Code of Ordinances to amend various portions of Chapter 15 Design Construction Standards, and I do believe this is the second reading.
I'll move the adoption of ordinance number 7-21.
I'll support. Go ahead, Patty, support. Got it.
And supporting. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we're gonna move on to our third unfinished business line. Township Library Update.
Hi, everybody. It's Holly. I'm the Director at Lion Township Public Library, and I'll be starting off our presentation. I'm gonna share my screen, so please let me know if everybody sees it, okay?
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so part of the presentation that we're giving tonight is to give some background information for things that have been going on with the library, so that's my portion of the presentation. So what we have here was just kind of a brief little library timeline from what happened from when we started with the needs assessments back in 2015 to 2016 with Quinn Evans Associates. And I'll be, get to some of that, but the site selection later on. In 2016, the library had a ballot initiative for a new facility and a new operating millage, and that was for a 24,000 square foot building and an operating millage of 1.585. We had a 29% voter turnout, and it was 43% yes with 57% no. So in 2017, we went back on the ballot just for an operating millage to replace our expiring operating millage to stay in the current facility. So we increased it by .3695 mils for 0.89. It actually ended up being more money than we initially had thought we were going to get because of the change in the law that library, new library millages would no longer be subject to a DDA capture. And as the DDA was capturing 13% of our operating budget, this really helped us out in being able to provide a lot more services at the library. It also allowed us to do a lot of the things that we wanted to do in a new facility that didn't involve space. So we were able to do a lot of the things that we had talked about for at the 2016 ballot initiative. And 2018, our new operating millage begins, and then in 2019 to 2020, you know, until the pandemic, we had our strategic plan and the revisioning of a new LTL facility. So just to briefly, with that new millage, there are a lot of things that we talked about offering to the public, including increased evening, evening and weekend hours, more downloadable ebooks and audiobooks, music magazines, more events and programs, especially for children, and we increased that by 50%. More digital resources for research and homework help, foreign languages, mostly our databases, now of which that we have 22 digital resources. Children's accessible technology in the library, and we did add a tech area. Removal of our rental fees for movies, we did that, and we went fine free in 2018. Mobile hotspot lending, we now have 20 hotspots. And now that I heard Lisa say about the possibility of broadband, if those funds would become available for the township, I can only stress so much that we have so many people in the township who lack internet connectivity, so if there was any way that the township could access those funds to help people in the township, I couldn't stress that enough, if that was something that was possible. And to increase community outreach and engagement. So these are just some brief stats, which unfortunately don't look so great for 2020, being the pandemic and all. But we still, with our downloadable checkouts and our electronic usage is what went up really high, and we still, we didn't lose our patrons, because we actually gave out a lot of library cards during the shutdown, and it's still almost 60% of households in the township have a library cardholder living in it. So some of our library partnerships. Our annual library card drive with fifth graders, it's our sixth grader initiative, so that every kid in the township can start out middle school with a library card, as that's when the kids have to start doing more research, and they end up using the library more. And we've created partnerships within the community with South Lion Area Rack, South Lion Education Foundation, Oakland County Schools Great Start, Michigan Alliance for Families, County Park, Secretary of State. I won't read them all, but we've been working very hard over the past few years to build those connections and to try and bring as many resources to the community as possible with working with our partners. And then community service. A lot of things that we do at the library is not necessarily what people think of as a library provides. These are more of like what people see in a community center, which has become a big focus for libraries in the modern world. We have done up to seven annual blood drives for electronic recycling events, which we still did during the pandemic. Mobile Secretary of State, which will no longer be offered by the Secretary, Secretary of State. Right now, they've retired their buses. Score Small Business Counseling, Free Notary Service, Community Shredding Events, Tax Forms, Tech and Genealogy Sessions, we manage the community garden plots, and we host meetings for homeowners associations, parent groups, and civic organizations. Then in 2019, 2020, we kicked off our strategic plan. We wanted to better understand community needs and library trends to create a vision for a new library and for library service in the township. We conducted community-wide surveys and focus group. The survey had a 4.2 individual and a 11.4 household response rate, which was above typical market return. So what did we learn? We learned that the majority of users still go to the library to check out books, movies, and to attend events. Residents want more books and movies, more events, to drive up book drop, more space, larger children's area, more seating in an enhanced outdoor area. Our library has a significantly less space per capita than any other library in the area by a factor of four to six. And while millage revenue is close to average statewide for Class IV libraries, it's significantly lower per capita than other local libraries. But our percentage of cardholders is on track for Class IV averages and for those within our community, air community within the county. So this is kind of the one-sheet version of our strategic plan, and if anybody is interested in the strategic plan, it's available on the township website as we submitted it to the board for this, and it is also on the library website. So it's basically, we're trying to do more for collections, events, and services to be a community hub with expanded technology, expanded collections and events. Future library design. In 2019, we engaged Quinn Evans Associates to create a plan for a new library based on the 2016 needs assessment, based on our strategic plan and our community surveys, and with feedback from the 2016 New Library Initiative that we heard from most people that the plan was too large. Our project priorities were flexible space, community hub, enhanced technology, and more collection space. So to go back to that 2016 needs assessment, that feasibility study, we had criteria for evaluating a library site. A location for a site that centrally located is possible to the majority of library users. Vehicle access, basically that people can enter and exit safely. Pedestrian access, that it should be a site convenient to bike and pedestrian traffic. The quality of the site, it should be pleasant, visibility, it should be able to be seen from the street. Familiarity, the site should have a location which the community recognizes. Acquisition cost should be basically an adequate amount of land for the building compatibility and development costs. So in the process of that feasibility study, we worked with the then Township Planner, Chris Dusen, to come up with eight different sites within the township. Some were township-owned parcels, and some were privately-owned parcels. And on this map, you can see all those little green dots. So those green dots were when we held three separate community meetings at the library, and for people who came to those meetings, where were they interested in having a library within the township? So you can see where the clusters of dots came to be. Also, out of those meetings came the discovery that people were mostly interested in having it be a township-owned parcel, as that would alleviate a tax burden to the community for building a township building. So these were their terms that they gave to different areas, so just in case people aren't aware, the Township Center, that was a piece of property that's, I think, a little bit north and immediately to the east of where Township Hall is. Site two is their Huron Valley Trail. Three is that DTE-owned piece of property off of Grand River. The Milford Road Corridor, Site four is the piece of property in next to Abbey Park at Mill River. Milford Road and 11 Mile is the future park. Piece of gland, Site six is Mulligan's, Site seven, Nine Mile and Griswold, and then Cat Tales on Nine Mile. So the two sites that were the definite winners of, for public and input from everyone within the township was the, was as the Mill River site. You can see that this is the piece of land, which is kind of like bifurcated by the road that comes in in front of Abbey Park. That's good. Basically, it hit all of the needs that we were looking for, for a development site. The second site that actually at the beginning was the one that was preferred the most by people from the township was the 11 Mile and Milford Road property that was for the park as just mostly for location. And I think the biggest deterrent for that one was the development costs were unknown at that time. So in 2020, QEA came up with the plan that involved using that Mill River site again, as we did in 2016. This just kind of shows a quick placement of where it could be on the property. But for this part, this doesn't really matter where a library would be, because this is, then the shape of the bu, building isn't necessarily as important either, because what it has is the important parts of what we would want within the library. This is what, you know, the, how would we split it up? What will we have for our community? And one of the things is that we have a very large program room that can be split into two. We have private study rooms, a separate maker's. That can be split into two, we have private study rooms, a separate maker's space. Separate genealogy and history center, technology, teen, adult and youth. And an outdoor activity area and a playscape. So some of those things, and obviously these pictures aren't from, they're from other library, libraries that are other places. Not anywhere here. So overall was be a dedicated friends area, friends of the library. A small storefront for book sales, dedicated genealogy area, integrated technology throughout the building. And flexible space through movable furniture. And the adult area, soft seating areas, casual vending in a self serve coffee bar. A big topic of discussion at that time was whether we would have a cafe. So that's where that comes from and a connectivity to an exterior area where we'd be able to do programming and. Have access to that children's area as well. Youth area would have a maintained line of sight for staff and adjacent to family restrooms. Teen area would kind of straddle the area between teen and adults and again, line of sight. And program rooms and event space, the large main program room that could be divided into two, also with a demonstration kitchen area. A separate youth program room that would have dedicated storage and a sink and also a maker's space. So these construction costs, obviously we're prepared in beginning of 2020. It shows that that escalation for fall 2024% was. Obviously a little low compared to what we have now. No one could have seen that one coming. So, but this is what we were presented with from Quinn Evans. So it's what I'm presenting now. So, and obviously we wouldn't know. You know, what construction costs would be at the time that we were building as we're not really there yet. So that would be something that would have to be developed later on. So I just wanted to give all of the background from where we were from the, the sites. And there were, there was obviously a lot more information on all of the sites that were provided. That was in that original document from the 2016 feasibility study. Information that we had from the development of a new site with QEA and our strategic plan. So this was all of that background information that you guys were looking for. And so that was my portion of this presentation. So I will stop sharing my screen unless anybody had any questions and wanted me to go back to a previous slide.
No questions as of now, Holly.
Excellent. I will stop sharing. And as of now, I'm going to turn it over to Joshua, who's going to talk a little bit on behalf of the library board.
Hey guys, my name is Joshua Basunghath, I'm a library board trustee member. A- as you just saw, you know, we presented last week, last month to you guys. With some questions and we received some feedback from the board members, which hopefully. The packet that Holly just presented, as well as the, the much larger packet that you all received prior to the meeting. Answered some of those questions, some of the bigger key points I want to bring home for everybody is. As you all know, the library is in desperate need of space. We are space deficient extremely. We're at the point now where we're not square foot per person, we're square inch. If not lower per person for our township. I don't think we could stress that enough as a need. We also got some feedback from the township board members in our last meeting that. You know, we need to, you guys would like to identify some community needs for some of the community properties that you guys, that we own as a township. Well, good news, the Lion Township Public Library has met some of, or found some of those needs that the township needs. Do our community studies, our focus groups, surveys that we've done in the past, we've identified some big needs here in the community. And that is a larger library. I want to drive home another point, the library is more than just books. I think people who don't really rec- get involved with the library. Don't understand the amount of services and programs that we offer for a community. If you look at Novi as an example, why they're much bigger than us. Novi doesn't use a community center because they utilize their library. They utilize it in the same way that we are currently doing it. We're just struggling with the programming and space availability to do everything with that. Our plans include flexible space that we can use for community programs. We like to think the library is the living room of the township. You know, this is where people come to, to meet, we, you know, as Holly mentioned in her presentation section was. We have community HOAs meeting at the library currently. We have, well, I say currently, obviously pandemic aside. We have groups that meet there, we have parties, community center activities go on. The library pretty much runs a community center as we have it now. I do want to, to draw a distinction. The library sits on about 6,000 square foot building. But half of that building is the community center, which we're currently utilizing and helping with. As part of, since it's in the same building as us. So when you're looking at the square footage, please keep in mind, while we are a 30, 3,500 square foot library. We're actually using a 6,000 square foot building and still don't have enough space. So the, the, the plans show about a three times larger building than 6,000 square foot, because that's what it is. That's, that's not an astronomical ask as far as square footage and it's a, it's a really important. Key aspect to realize that while we are a 3,500 square foot library, we're actually, you know, 6,000 square foot building. That we just can't possibly use enough, we need way more space. So that's kind of where that number comes from. For the new library proposal. I think at this point, I'll, I'll turn it over to Amy and let Amy kind of. Let her take it from here.
And can I, before Amy starts, Amy, can I just say one thing? One thing that I, I believe is that, that you don't think that the board is behind you. I mean, everything that you're saying, it, it seems like you don't think that this, this board stands behind the library, but that. See, that's a falsity because this board does stand behind the library. The, the whole key issue is where we stand behind to build it. So we know you guys do a wonderful job. There's not one person on this board that doesn't think you do a wonderful job. We, we know you do a great job and would we love to see a larger building? Yes, absolutely, we would. I, I looked through some of the feasibility studies that you did and there's one really, really important number that you guys missed. In the consent judgment for Mill River, we have a 16% royalty that has to be paid to the developer of that property. So if you take 16% and you add it to your numbers, you're way above the 11 Mile Park property. And I think, I think, and I'm just speaking for myself, I think that we could probably work together. As the township and the library and come to some kind of consensus where we could possibly help each other on that 11 Mile Park property. So go ahead, Amy, I just wanted to let you know that we do stand behind you guys. I mean, it's just how you keep saying, you know, I hear from Joshua a lot that, you know, we do so much good for, and we know you do. Everybody on this board knows you do, we stand behind you. I, I'm not, I'm going to speak for myself, I stand behind you. I have in the last race, I always stood behind you. You know, you guys needed work done at the library. I always get it done for you. I mean, I fixed the roof, you've never had a roof on there, I couldn't. You know, we, we pushed to get the library built, okay? And I'll be behind it, we just need to know where you want to go with it. So I just wanted to let you know, we're on your side, you don't, that's not a convincing thing, we're, we're convinced it's a great thing.
And we appreciate, yeah, we, we appreciate that a lot, John. And that's, that's the next part I'm just going to talk about, it's like, so what, what, what we think and what we hope is the next step. What we're asking from the township is, we're asking you, basically what you were just kind of saying, like to partner with us. To create an improved library facility that benefits the whole community. The library's goals have, have always been the same, you know, we strive to improve the services we offer to the patrons. And just like the township, I think, you know, aims to improve the quality of life in the township for all the residents. And I think this common ground can lead us to giving the community what they've been asking for. Which is a vastly updated library with community space for meetings, for programs. For outdoor spaces for children, for community events, like things Holly mentioned, the blood drives. Electronic recycling, the shredding events. All which, like she said, we've been doing, but we've just been limited due to our current building size and our limited parking. And the parking is not a good issue with us at all. And our main ask, I guess, is we would like to work with the township planner and the entire township board. To discuss our, our options and to identify the best location for a new library on township owned property. Because we feel that would be the most fiscally responsible plan. Existing township property would be less of a tax burden on the residents than trying to purchase land in this area. A joint project for an improved library with multi-use outdoor space. And a lot of flexible indoor areas, which would fill many of the needs for a community gathering space. Which we, the township really doesn't have right now. As the population grows, you know, so do all the needs of the residents. And I really think together we could bring something positive to the community that everyone can utilize. I know there's a, a lot to talk about all of us together, so hopefully we can all join together and come up with something new for everyone.
You know what, Amy, I agree with 100% of what you just said. I absolutely agree with that. And, and you know, I think there are ways that we could work together, but we have to work together. I mean. Just like that 16% on top of that Mill River property, you're talking about a big chunk of change on that. You're talking over a million dollars, probably a million five maybe. And that's, that's has to be paid, there's no getting out of that. So that's one thing that you have to, you have to remember, any calculations on that property, you have to add a lot of money to it. 16% of the overall build. So that's why you, now on the 11 Mile Park property, we don't have that. We have a drain crossing, okay? I think that if we work together, we can get across that drain. We can make that a multiple purpose piece of property, which by the way, is that's a little more centered in the township than the Mill River property does. And I think we could get together and I'm saying it for myself only, there's, there's six other people on this board. But I could get behind something like that and I could get, I could, we could work together and try to make something like that happen. And there's no royalty put on that property, that's our property solely. The Mill River really isn't our property, it's under consent judgment and there's, there's strengths tied to that judgment. So anyone else can speak up if they would, I'd appreciate it.
I, I agree with what you said and I had the opportunity to speak with Amy, I hope that's all right, Amy, that, that I mentioned that. And we had a nice conversation that, that went kind of along these same lines. And I think, you know, both groups, as it's been said, have needs and could really partner to achieve some great things. Down a couple of different roads. I guess pun intended, for, for different, I guess, program areas, let's say, for the whole community. So that really is, I think, a great goal to have and I think it's certainly attainable.
It's good to hear.
John, I just wanted to add a couple of comments. I did have a good conversation with Holly the other day and I told her that. I guess my personal favorite's location in this case would be the 11 Mile Park location. Just simply because, you know, Chris, Patty and I have worked so hard to get some of these paving projects for the pathways. All, we have complete connectivity down 11 Mile from Martindale all the way to Milford Road. We have multiple new developments that have, that have come in on the north side as well as on the south side. Like Elko Farms is complete, so we have a pretty large population that has been added to that 11 Mile corridor. And so I think that as far as the pedestrian access is really important. So that was just my, my input regarding that. But one of the concerns that I would have, and I think that it would be important for us to make sure we address that. Is that if we did have this as a multi-use location, we have a library perhaps. And then eventually maybe there are some baseball fields or multi, like this football field or something. One of the items that would be, I think, very problematic would be that perhaps some of those. Participants in those sporting events would start to use the library parking and perhaps use the library bathroom. So I think that in the, in future discussions, I, what would be, I think in everybody's best interest is to make it clear. That if additional uses were to be added to that overall park property, like a baseball field or a football field. That those, um, let's say it's the South Lion Junior League, there would need to be parking. Created for that specific use so that we don't have those sports uses using the library parking. And it just even, maybe even make sure that there are restrooms available or, you know, porta jones available. Just to make sure that they're not all trucking into the library to, to use the bathroom or the, or other facilities. So just keeping that maybe on the future or keeping that in our minds to make sure that. If this is the location that we protect the library's parking. In any future uses that could be added to that property. But aside from that, um, I mean, I, I'm leaning and I've been pretty clear with, with some other folks. I've been leaning really toward that 11 Mile location.
Anyone else like to give a little input?
I can jump in, John, thank you.
Go ahead, Chris.
I guess, you know, to put it, put it simply, either the Mill River property or the 11 Mile Milford property, you know. Both scored as the top two, so whichever one seems to shake its way out as the. As the winner, if you update those cost estimates and everything, neither one's fine with me, you know, they're both generally located. And I think they'd be, they'd be good, but yeah, so. No issues from me.
And John, if I could just jump in really quick, I think obviously there's a park plan, there's a library plan. And if the two come together, there would have to be, we would have to address that, we'd have to address how the uses, if it were to exist on the site. How they could coexist, both from a parking standpoint, restroom facilities, accessibility, whatever. So I think both would need to be tweaked to fit together so they could function well in that same location. So I have confidence that we could all work through something like that.
I, I just think, I think that it would be more feasible for the township and the library to work together on that piece of property. Just because it is the township's property. I mean, that, that consent judgment has things in it that, that are, they're going to, they're costly. But then I think that the park property is a really nice property, I mean, either you could get two ways in off 11 Mile. Milford Road could have a nice big parking area, I, I think it'd be a nice, it'd be a nice piece. I could definitely get behind that. And I'm like, again, I'm speaking for myself, I think Sean, Chris and Lisa all said the same thing. I don't know if Patty, you want to?
Yeah, no, I, we had, I had, I think Chris and I went to all the meetings for the library in 2016. And like I mentioned before, we were very excited about the library and I did everything I possibly could to help Holly. And we did look very long and hard about the 11 Mile Park property. And I think because of the, without checking into the 16%, which we did. We, at the time, we thought the, the, um, the Mill River property was a better option. But I agree, I think if we could work together and create a really nice outdoor, even the patrons of the library. If, if our library went there at the 11 Mile Park. We could have an amazing outside that would benefit the library and then the outside park would, would benefit us. You know, if you could work together, you might be able to make an amazing community thing there. Like Sean mentioned, John mentioned, so I would like, I would like to look more at the 11 Mile Park. After we got the news, Carol did the research for us and actually spoke to. The Earl family about even trying to see if we could do anything about getting out of that, but I don't think that's going to happen. So that is a big price tag for any building you build there, even if, even if we built something there. tag for any building you build there, even if, even if we built something there. And I'm still hoping to have my little corner there for safety town. So, but, um, I think it might be a good thing and maybe we can fix the drainage too. So those are my thoughts.
Robert, you want to chime in?
Yeah. Um, I mean, I had participated in that, uh, little dot mapping exercise back in 16 and, and those, I, I believe I picked the 11 Mile site as my choice. Then I, I liked the Township Center as well originally, but the lack of centrality makes sense to drop that one down. Um, I'm not opposed to the Mill River site either. Um, I, I think there's a lot of questions to still be dug through about the exact layout. Like I, how much drainage improvement can we make? Cause we were having issues with, uh, field layout at the 11 Mile site as far as keeping things out of flooding during the spring. Um, but that's something that potentially tying back to, um, Chris's comments earlier, one of the other potential uses for the American Rescue Plan funding, um, also deals with, um, stormwater improvements. Um, so that's another avenue to possibly take into account here. Um, I guess a, as we go through just trying to determine, you know, which site is the best for all parties, um, I guess I'd, I'd like to see if, if we could get some of that, um, just refreshed research on the consent judgment situation brought, um, into a packet somewhere. Um, I would appreciate that or, um, as well as, um, the, the other angle here that I, I guess I have questions about too, is the use of the existing site. Um, if the library were to move, what do we do with that site? And also, I don't know if anyone has actually been able to definitively rule out, um, that the northern two-thirds of that parcel is basically vacant right now. And I, I don't know if, if Quinn Evans ever looked deep, how deeply at, you know, what, what the topography of that site is, if it's feasible to do anything else there or not. But I'd want to rule that out before we get too far down the line here.
Hey, is it anything else?
Nope.
Michelle?
No, I was just hoping we could use the American Rescue Plan monies to help also because that was our, our big amount of money is crossing that drain and if it's available, otherwise both places are going to be really expensive.
Well, I, I, I don't know if that helps at all. Uh, it kind of give you an idea of where the board's kind of setting. Um, is there any questions that you guys have? I mean, I think there's, if, if you put a little bit of effort into that property at 11 Mile and Milford Road and see if it's designable, to see if it's capable of what you want to do, I think that would be a really, a good starting point.
Yeah, we were, we were never opposed to that area. We just, I, Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong. At, at the time, there was just too much cost involved to bring in the infrastructure needed at that site. And then Mill River site, you know, already had everything there.
Right. It was the, uh, infrastructure crossing the drain and stuff that it would be set further back from the road and the drain crossing. And there was, there was also at the time, the, uh, you know, there were plans for the, the full park and those plans are still out there, but, you know, trying to get those to coexist too was, you know?
But having it a, having it a multi-use, a township and library use gives us the option to help some of the payment.
Yeah, I think you're right, John. Because even with some of those fields that were planned at 11 Mile, we built, you know, a couple of fields already behind the fire station. So some of that real estate, so to speak, opens up.
You know, the fact that the, I don't remember when that interstate, intersection was signaled, but I don't know that it happened prior to 2016. So now having, uh, the traffic light there and some of the pathway, uh, sections filled in, there's a lot more pedestrian accessibility, which I think is nice. And, you know, obviously I'm jumping way ahead here, but I mean, the, uh, one of the things that was mentioned during the presentation was, uh, visibility. And I don't think that you would want to move, you know, a sports field up near the road. I think you'd want to put the library up near the road. So in that particular location, I think there's quite a bit of opportunity, though there is a stream to have it in a pretty, uh, pretty visible area. So it really kind of i- is easily seen and it's kind of like a, kind of an icon at the corner.
Did the, the Hickory Creek development, wa- was that going to involve any paving of 11 Mile or not? No? Okay.
No.
Thanks. All right. I just, I couldn't remember if that was going to be a change in costs on that.
Yeah, I think it's paved for what? About a hundred feet, 150 feet?
It drops off pretty quick, but.
Okay. Well, I, I guess that's kind of, uh, it was a great update. We really appreciate that. And, and by the way, I, like I, I'll say it again, we know you guys are doing a tremendous job there. I mean, we hear it from everyone, but in, and I'm, I'm sincere when I say that. I'm not just saying that. You, you guys do a tremendous job and by all the paperwork that you sent us, it shows. So these updates are nice. I, I, you know, we talked about it before, just to keep this board involved with the library board, these updates are, are good. I mean, they can't always be really super long, but it would be nice to have, you know, just somebody come in and, and give us an update on maybe numbers or what the library's doing or, you know, just something like that to keep us all communicative.
If, if I could just say one thing really quick, I noticed in your proposal, you reduced the building size, which is one of the things I heard the most back in 16, um, by 20%. I think that's significant. It looks like you've obviously planned to expand and add, you know, future square footage to get it back to, you know, uh, the, the space that you had originally, uh, you know, envisioned, which I think just makes a great deal of sense. So unfortunately, construction costs are at like a ridiculously all-time high and, you know, timing for some of these things doesn't always work out. But hopefully in, uh, the coming months or year, things kind of come back down to earth a little bit. But I can just say, um, that I, I appreciate that, you know, that was a part of your plan.
Yeah. Part of our plan with that was, um, like you said, we talked to Quinn Evans and did discuss with them that we would like the building to be expandable as cheap as possible, or cut more cost efficient, I guess is the better word. Um, and so that was put into the plan that the building would be kept in mind to have the ability to expand to meet the growing needs. Um, whereas the, the current library is not exactly built in that manner of thinking. Um, the one question I have for everybody, uh, it sounds like the, the entire board is on board, um, to work with us as far as getting these two sites narrowed down. So I guess we were kind of asking today also, like, what would you prefer to go beyond here? Um, I know we have that subcommittee that was formed and then kind of disbanded. Do we need to bring that back up with the town, with the board like that, with the board like everybody there to have their input, uh, moving forward? Cause we are wanting to get this rolling as soon as possible, obviously for the, to meet our needs.
Again, I'm going to speak for myself, but I, I would really like to see you focus on the 11 Mile Milford Road piece and try to put something together on that. And then we can talk about it. It sounds to me like the board is on, everybody's in unison pretty much on that. There might be a couple that are asking a few questions, but if you could get something together and focus on the 11 Mile Milford, uh, piece and get something designed for that and some costs together that are realistic to what you want to build. And then maybe that's when we bring it back to the board and we start talking about how the board can help.
So since this is a joint effort, did you guys want to have input into that, those studies and information gathering? Since it will be a joint board pa- property or the, it sounds like the direction we're heading.
I think, to me, I think the people that we would need on board from, from the township would be our planner and our engineer, and only because we want to make sure that there's enough room where the, where the building sits, that we could possibly maybe put some fields in there, not to interrupt with the library, but, you know, that my, my thought is your, your, uh, conversation should be with the engineer and the planner at first to make sure it even works. And that's part of, that's part of our push forward that we can help as a township to offer that service. We can say they can work with you and we'll get it figured out in, in, in no cost. But, and I'm, again, I'm speaking on my own here, but I, I don't think anybody on this board would, would say no to that. Uh, our engineers and planners could work with you guys just to make sure it fits and that there, it's capable of doing what you guys want to do.
Yeah. And John, I, I would agree with that because obviously a park master plan has been put together that didn't contemplate a library, uh, with the parking needs that will be associated with it being placed on the same site. So I think trying to mesh the two plans, um, from a land use and land area standpoint i- is going to be important. And Leslie and Brian would be, uh, I, I think the, the top two people of, at least from our end to start, uh, that discussion and be in the room. But, you know, beyond that, you know, how much more parking do we need beyond what the library's demands will be for some of the other recreational uses? And, you know, I, I would have to say some of the recreational uses as we had originally planned are going to change. They're absolutely going to change. To what extent, we don't know, but we can't fit everything that we had originally programmed there if we add, uh, you know, the library and the parking. And, and while that's okay, uh, we need to just take a look at what then that's going to look like.
And I think them two are the ones that could put that on paper with you. Just see if it was even feasible.
Okay. So we will, um, we'll shoot out email to set up a meeting, um, tonight or tomorrow. Uh, did any of the board members from the township would like to just be in that meeting? I'm just opening it up as since we are doing this jointly.
I, I just don't have time, Josh. I, I don't have time to do that, but I mean, anyone else is absolutely welcome if they want to sit. And that's nice that you offer that because you're right. It would be nice to have a representative from the board, uh, sitting like, you know, and talk. But I think.
Not four of you.
Pardon me?
Right.
Just not four of you.
Yes. No, I'm just, maybe one or two.
I think there were a couple.
The biggest thing to start, I'm just saying, the biggest thing to start though is the feasibility of the entire plant. If it's not feasible, if it doesn't work at all, and I think Brian and Leslie are the two that can tell you that, that's not going to cost an arm and a leg for anyone. Um, we can, we can see if it's going to be costly to bring the water main down. You know, we, we can see if it's going to be that costly to cross the, the ditch. I mean, w- we have to do that first to make sure it's affordable. It's not out of range.
I just had a quick comment. Um, back from when we did the, the work in 2016, I know that Quinn Evans did some, at least preliminary, uh, feasibility work of that site. So I would have to go back and see what that was, but we could certainly bring that to the table, um, to see.
Sure.
With the information.
Then you, then we could take that and just to see where it can be situated, how the parking would work for you. And, you know, I mean, I, I just think that's a starting point. And I think other than being stuck in the mud, it could be a great starting point to get this thing moving in a direction that's good for everyone.
Well, that now, I, I would just like to make a quick comment that, you know, we talk about people who are using the park and people who were using the library and how we can, you know, help each other as, you know, organizations. But the people who use the park and the people who use the library, those, those are all the same people, you know, they're all the, these aren't just two distinct groups necessarily.
You're actually right.
And I, I really think that the community would be really excited that there would be a multi-use property. And back in 2016, this was the property that I thought would be really cool because we could do so much with it. So I'm very excited that we're talking about that piece of property. And I really want, I really want to thank everybody for your support and for continuing to work with us on the future needs of the library for the township. So I thank you for that.
We're excited too, Holly. I, I know you, sometimes it doesn't seem that way, but there's just a lot on the township's plate, but we are super excited for you guys. We want this to happen. And I think in the back of that park, isn't there a conservatory or isn't there some conserv-, I mean, where there's, they're going to put walkways through there and stuff? I know one time they were going to.
It's a, we were gonna, we were gonna do some wood chip pathways and things like that with some interpretive signage.
It's large too. I mean, it's a big area.
Huge.
And we're talking about doing like a storybook walk. That would be perfect back there. And it really kind of meshes in with our, uh, sustainable living, uh, initiative that we have through, uh, Lion Grows that kind of dovetails with all of that. So.
Holly, I'm so happy you said that about the park and the, the people because you're absolutely right. They're all the residents of the township that are using everything. I mean, is there, they're the ones that are going to, you know, say yes or no to the village. So, I mean, it's, it's a great opportunity for everybody. I, I'm, I'm excited about it actually.
John, I have a question and maybe it's Michelle or maybe it's Patty. I'm not quite sure. But, um, with these most recent events regarding that, you know, the, the possible, um, money coming in from the federal government for infrastructure or for, uh, as Chris mentioned, who would, um, who would Holly follow up with on that? Would it be Leslie, Brian, Patty, Michelle? Where the status of that would be or how potentially, you know, if we were to get that money, of course, as a board, we would have to.
This is all.
How to use it. So who would they follow?
I, I'll let you know, right now it's very new. We have to put an application and we've been on top of this whole thing for quite a while. Uh, the application is coming to us. It's not out there yet. Um, it has strings attached. Again, there's, you just can't throw it around. Rena, our auditor is working hard on that. And when she gets her hands on that and figures out what it can be used for, we'll be able to talk a lot more intelligent about what can be used. And, and possibly it can be used for things like that. I don't know.
Yeah. Rena and I are gonna, um, when the application is available, Rena and I are gonna fill it out and send it in on behalf of the township so that we acquire the money. And then it would be up to the seven-member board to decide what we're going to spend the money on.
Yeah. The treasury, the treasury department did send it to us already. So she's got it.
She must've just got that because she was waiting for it.
She, yeah, she said she'd be in tomorrow. So.
Okay. Well, uh, is everybody satisfied, uh, tonight? Okay?
Yeah. I just asked that. Anybody that would like to be part of that meeting with Leslie and Brian, please email myself or Amy or Holly so we can add you to the loop.
You know, I think maybe Josh would be a good idea is throw that, uh, email out to a few of the board members when you're going to have it. And then possibly if someone can come to it, I mean, that would be great. You know, everybody's kind of busy, but you've got to set that meeting up. So when you get that set up, throw it out there.
Will do.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Thanks. Thanks, everybody. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to new business. The first new business we have is the elevated tank painting and minor repair of the Blue Cross Tower. Um, I guess I'll, I'll kind of put this, this was, uh, this was something that we were going to do for quite a long time. I don't know if you guys remember how long we've put painting the, uh, New Hudson Water Tower, um, on the budget. It's been ever since I've been here before. Uh, so we actually had Nelson, uh, engineers come in who specialize in tanks, uh, elevated tanks. They did a complete inspection on the tanks at, uh, New Hudson and the tank of Blue Cross. And the Blue Cross needs a good cleaning. The paint is still decent on that tank. They're going to do some minor repairs that need to be done. Unfortunately, the New Hudson Tower is kind of needs a lot of work. They're going to, they would sandblast that right down, uh, and put a new logo on it to match our other logos, uh, and then repaint the, well, repaint it first, then put the logo on. But they're gonna, uh, go ahead and make that look good again. Okay. So if you looked at the estimates that Nelson got, uh, he wants us to take the Fetawa ink, which is the lowest bid, and I think it was a hundred nineteen thousand nine ninety-nine. So a hundred twenty thousand. And that's for, uh, repainting the water tower, the New Hudson one completely sandblasting it down, repainted and then cleaning and repairing the other, the Blue Cross tank. And it's a great, it's a great deal because I remember, uh, we've been putting 500 grand in the budget to do these things. And we were told it was going to cost us much as 250,000 minimum. And we're actually at 120, which is pretty amazing.
And I was surprised to see it come in as low as it did. And, uh, I don't think anyone would question the need for it. The tower, I was at the park yesterday and, uh, was happy that this is on the agenda tonight, but, uh, I'll just at least move it along or at least move the discussion along, make a motion to, uh, approve the bid by Fetawa uh, with an amount not to exceed $120,000.
I'll support that. And I guess I would just add, um, a question for Leslie. I mean, did the low bid was quite a bit lower than the, um, estimated cost? Is there any concern or anything with that or?
Well, honestly, that was bid by Nelson. So I don't really know the details between the two contractors and why it was so, um, so much lower, but. Um so much lower, but.
I can answer that. I can answer that. No, I can answer that. I talked to, I talked to Keith Nelson, the uh president of the company. Uh for quite some time and I asked him the very same question. And he said, you could pick any one of these guys and you're going to get the best job you've ever seen. He said Federal wa- might just have more crews available right now. They can get on it quicker. He goes, but they're great company and they'll do a great job. And by the way, Nelson is going to run the job. They're going to run the project, so. They're going to hand, they'll they'll uh make sure everything's done right.
I noticed in their review that they had worked with this contractor before and uh kind of spoke highly of him, so I thought that that was good.
He said, don't worry one bit about this, this company. Okay, any other questions or any com- comments?
Does this come out of the the Water Enterprise Fund then?
It does.
Well, my motion should have included that, Robert. Thanks for catching me. I'll uh I'll accept that as a friendly amendment to my motion.
Very good. I'll amend the support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect, get that thing painted. Okay, moving on to the Lion West Beds metering recommendation of contract award. Now here, Leslie has tried extremely hard to get bidders on these projects. And this project, I know, looking at it at at fifty-three or fifty-four thousand dollars seems like a. Big contract, but is a very small contract to most of the people bidding these, so they wouldn't even bid it. Uh we went back to our only guy who's D'Angelo, who does all kinds of work for us. And he didn't want to bid it. He 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 said, I I don't really want to bid it. We begged him to and because, by the way. The DEQ has been really upset that we don't have a metering uh going to the west beds. So we have no clue how much uh how much sewage we've, or I shouldn't say treated water. What do they call it? Influent or effluent?
That's one.
Effluent.
Yeah.
W- we have no clue how much effluent flow we have going to the west beds. So so Anthony's basically guessing when he changes the meter to the east beds. And the DEQ has never kept eagle, whatever. They have never cared for that. So this is going to get us into compliance and plus this will help for what we have going on. With all the the other stuff. I don't want to talk too much about that, but. And we. That's what we have, you guys, and Leslie, you can go ahead and fill in anything I missed.
No, just one other thing is that we did remove the east beds metering um. From the project because the west beds is more critical, so I would anticipate that coming to you in the future. Once I can get bidders, maybe over the winter. Um they're just tricky projects because like John said, they're considered small in the industry and they take multiple trades. So they're not as appealing as some of the other projects that are out for bid right now. But D'Angelo is great to work with and they do, um like John said, a lot of maintenance work in the community and I'm happy to recommend them.
By the way, D'Angelo treats us really, really good. And like I say, he's doing this basically because we need it. If we, if if we okay it. So any questions about that or do you guys feel okay with one bid or do you want us to keep trying to get others to bid?
If the scale of the project is what we think. Hit us on not getting bidders, did did we consider bidding both the east and west bed together to attract more?
He did and nobody bid on that either.
Oh, okay.
That that one's trickier because it takes four trades on the east beds. That's why we peeled it out of this package and went back just the west beds only. So we have tried that and uh personally contacting multiple contractors, myself and Highland Treatment. And really, this is what's before you tonight.
And we really do need this. We we need this valve body put on there. We need to know how much effluent is going to that bed.
All right, then I guess I'll make a motion to. Award the contract for the west beds to D'Angelo Brothers. Um with a total project cost of sixty-one thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-five cents from the sewer enterprise fund.
I'll support.
Michelle.
Okay, how much should you say for that? Did you have the right number there, Leslie?
If he added the contingency referenced in our letter, so yes, it's correct.
Okay, thanks, Robert. We have a motion and a support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, guys. We really needed that.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to the. Consideration of approval for architectural and planning service for fire station two addition. Chief, I'm going to let you handle that one.
Okay, uh good evening again, everyone. Uh what we're looking for. Uh is to try and get approvals to develop drawings um to expand uh Station Two and um. Part of that was the uh from from Lindouten Associates. Um we've seen since the building was built in two thousand one. That uh the growth in service, the growth in uh staffing and also the uses, uh we've kind of outgrown. Uh the approximate twelve hundred square foot uh living area. And now we've also got the uh expanded use with the elections, which um. You know, alters where our, right now, all of the um. Elections are in the Bay Area where we keep our trucks. So that can be problematic when it's November or uh other times. And usually it means that we have to relocate our staffing because there really is just a small kitchen dining area. So we end up relocating our staff at Station Two, which is the most centrally uh central part of our um township or or building. Up to Station One, so that affects everything from response times. Um and w- we were hoping that maybe if we looked at expanding upward. Uh for a second living area for the firefighters. That we could get rid of two dorms, you know, that are for sleeping on the main floor, which would expand the training room. And make it comparable to the size of the training rooms at that Station One. And for those days of the year, whatever is needed for elections, that they can um. Have the comfort, a more, you know, climate-controlled environment for the elections. And uh and it's not compromising anything as far as response or where we place apparatus because the personnel would be upstairs. One of the big uh problems we thought was going to be upfront. Was that we were possibly going to need an elevator, but we did check with the uh state of Michigan. And since it is not open to the public, that it would just be for firefighter uh living area. That uh we could a- and with the building officials. Uh approval that we could get that uh exemption. And I've talked to uh Dave at our building department about that and and there is no issue with uh needing an elevator. So this is just kind of the, I guess, the opening volley to see if we can go up. And the cost would be to develop the plans between seventy-six hundred and ninety-five hundred. I think it spelled out pretty well. Uh by Brad. And then if it's something that's feasible, I would return in the next. Thirty to sixty days, I would imagine uh before that um to to go forward or, you know, go in a different direction.
So basically, Chief, you're looking for uh a, say, a ninety-five hundred dollar. Investment into the architectural plans that when they're drawn and handed to you, then you put that out for bid. So so basically, it's to start the process for the three-bid process and that's. That's basically what I think you're asking, so.
Correct. Yeah, this is not the job. This is just, uh you know, and initially we had looked at taking out walls, expanding to the west and. In my uh amateur, you know, opinion, I don't think we have to do that. That we should be able to go up and I think we can still get um, you know, the use that we're looking for. And also with the um, you know, for Michelle's uh elections and things like that, the uh the training room would be. Uh huge. I mean, a lot bigger than what they have now. To utilize. So this is just to get the ball rolling to the three-bid process we get there.
It would great to to, it would. Yeah, it would really be great to use that facility. Um for a bigger precinct because precinct six is way over and we're trying to relocate now. Um. We'll probably be bringing something back to the board next month also about changing our voting locations because we have outgrown. Uh three out of the nine. So we're trying to utilize the schools, but if we could use that station, that would be great. Um but again, it's all just depending upon cost, you know, again, things are through the roof right now. It might not be feasible, but it sure would be nice to know if it. If we could go up for that station and just, you know. Expand a little bit, but again, it it might not be feasible, but it would sure would nice, be nice to know.
Uh anybody have any questions? Do you feel comfortable with spending uh ten thousand dollars to get the quotes out there?
Don, you you kind of asked what I was going to ask, that reading the uh. Proposal that's in front of us, it's for basically just a conceptual design to see if this is feasible, so. Um as long as, you know, if we move forward with this, as long as they come back and if it is feasible, we. Well, for bids for, you know, designing construction services, I think this is probably the safest way to go to start.
And I think kind of similar to the same way we did the township, huh? We we had them put together a little conceptual. Everybody, everybody got an opportunity to change this and that and look at it. And then I believe, I believe that this cost would be the final drawings for bid too. I think this cost, I'm guessing, but I think Chief, didn't he say when he's finished? These are ready to go out for bid once they're all done?
Uh yeah, that is my understanding and I'm just doing a quick review of of uh, you know, for that note. Um but that is my understanding and I can confirm that uh with him tomorrow as well.
John, the only thing I wanted to mention was um, and I have no objection to moving ahead in this way, but I do think that um. We should be planning on having the general fund pay for a portion of this addition. Given that we're going to be using it for elections and other township-related functions, so uh I would like to at least. Um have a start the process of thinking about how we would uh split this cost. Uh so it's equitable.
Yeah, I I think we have already talked about that somewhat. Just because of that, you're absolutely right, Sean. Uh it'd be nice to break this up a little bit and not take it all out of the fire department, but.
And actually, this design cost, if you guys have a formula that you're comfortable with, I'd even recommend that we split the design cost, you know, start it now. Split the design cost as, you know, uh and really I actually be comfortable with the staff making that determination. Um personally would be uh so that way we're we're in from the beginning with uh kind of supporting this going forward.
I agree with that. I agree with that and we do have a formula. We used it in the last one, so we'll 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 get that out. So we would do that, I think. I think the board would be all right to do that.
No, that sounds good. Thank you.
I think. They'd have to talk for themselves.
And and Ken just.
Anybody? Go ahead.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, their their proposal does say this is only for concept drawings only. So, you know, they'd still have to go through schematic design, design development, then the construction documents, then bid it. So this is the very, very beginning, so um.
Is that what he told you, Chief? Because u- usually this, he he writes it right to the end, but I guess if that's what you're reading, Chris, that's the way it is.
Yeah, it's the last bullet on the uh second page.
It does seem a little bit, it it's a, it's a pretty good price for a a complete set, so.
But we do. Yeah, and I don't mind going this route just to make sure it's actually feasible, so it's probably, it's it's the smart way to go to, you know. Have somebody who's already familiar with the township to say, hey, okay, this this can work, what, you know, get our visions aligned.
And I'll bring his, your questions to him uh this week and and uh get clarity. And I can send an email that, you know, on what our conversation goes like. Good question. Okay, anyone else have any questions or do we feel good enough about moving this forward? Okay, so we want to make a motion, move it forward?
I'll make a motion to um approve the nine thousand five hundred proposal to Lynn Hout. Yes, to Lynn Hout um for conceptual um design of addition to Station Two.
I'll support that, but could I request a- as a, I got a friendly amendment for the second time tonight, uh that we just apply the. Staff uh formula for splitting out the cost for this as well.
Sure.
Accept that in your motion, Michelle?
And and yeah, and I don't know, John, if you have a rough estimate, just so the public knows, but obviously the the goal here is is just to have it. Uh you know, shared cost between both the fire fund and the general fund because of the multi-use of this, so. Um you know, the money will not change. It's just a matter of what accounts will be.
Yeah, exactly. I don't know what that is offhand, but I'll get that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Uh all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
All right, next one, consideration for assignment and use of school resource officers for South Lion East High School. And South Lion High School. Lieutenant, you want to talk that one up?
Yes, yes, sir, I will. Uh so what I've done is uh I've furnished the contracts. They're the exact same contracts we reviewed and signed. Uh last year for the SRO, the school resource officers at South Line East and South Line High School in the city. Uh I did update the the contract to reflect the current rates that the. County charges the township for each, that cost being one hundred forty-six thousand nine hundred seventy thousand dollars and fifty cents for each position. And uh the the terms are exactly the same. Uh the the. The city of South Lion, the school board will be responsible for covering the costs at South Line High School while they're in school for the forty-week session. And the township uh splits fifty-fifty the cost of South Line East while they're in session. So I I do have those figures here. Uh the South Line East would ultimately cost uh. The school district fifty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents. And the South Lion City will cost uh the school board uh one hundred thirteen thousand fifty-four dollars and forty cents. So this is a really good uh program. Uh I've gotten nothing but great and positive feedback from from parents and all the faculty over at the school. And I'd like you guys to consider approving that so we can be there for another year.
Okay, Lieutenant, uh any questions for Lieutenant?
I do have one question. Um the exhibit C. For South Lion High School. Uh this, the co- uh contracts. Period set and then salary determination for SRO and then underneath it, it says City of South Lion. Why, why do we have City of South Lion to determine our salary for that? I mean, I know that the house, that South Line High School is in the city, but wouldn't the salary determination be based on? Lion Township?
Well, uh well, the the salary is actually based on the cost that the county charges. So I'm, I'm looking to other. Yes, you know what? And that's something that I manipulated when I changed it. I changed it to mirror the uh. Yeah, that that would be a mistake. I can fix that. Yeah. Yeah, I changed it to mirror that actual school and that's not appropriate. I'm glad you caught that. Good, good job.
Well.
I'll fix it.
And uh I I just, I didn't actually think it was a mistake. I thought that maybe there was something else going on. And then.
Nope.
The other question, I guess, is more of a generic question that I'm sure um some other folks have have at the forefront. Um this, in this particular year, have we reached out to Salem Township, Green Oak Township or the State of South Lion to help contribute? Since their students do attend both of those high schools and we just, for some reason. Have yet to really get a consistent um contribution from those municipalities.
I I personally have not reached out to any of those municipalities in an effort to get them to contribute. I can pose that question to uh the superintendent to see if we can gain some some more funds from them if you'd like part of endorsing this.
I mean, I might be mistaken, but I thought at one time Salem kicked in some money and I thought Green Oak did too. But I. I thought they did, but I don't think the city of South Lion ever did.
They have not.
Yeah, so they may have been uh when the previous school board was in there and 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 this superintendent may not know, but I I I can't have that conversation with them.
And I would certainly think it's the school board's job to ask those communities rather than you, Lieutenant Whitfield, uh to contribute. I mean, I understand, Lisa, what your point was, but I completely agree. I mean, we continue to be the only one who's paying for this uh outside of the school district and uh. You know, I think we're all, we've all been proud to unanimously support this program and see the value in it, but it sure would be nice to have um. You know, other communities also paying the freight because we completely pay solely. The twelve weeks that the kids are not in school, Lion Township pays one hundred percent of that for both SRO, so that should be known publicly as well. the 12 weeks that the kids are not in school, Lion Township pays 100% of that for both SROs. So that should be known publicly as well. So we bear not only the burden of matching the cost for the, the time in school, but we pay for both SROs for the 12 weeks that each of them are not in school. And that, I mean, it's a significant cost. And I mean, again, I think we're all proud to do it, but it would be nice to have some other support from the other communities, as was previously mentioned. Uh, several other communities send their kids to school here.
With you though, Sean, I'm, I'm extremely proud to do it. And I'm extremely proud to be the only community to stand up and do it. And, and I think that says a lot for this board. I'll just tell you that right now. It says a lot for this board.
It does. I wish we didn't have to be the only one to say that we're doing it. But.
Well, I, I'm still happy to say that we will. And you know what? It's kids, you know, it's invisible boundary lines, you know, we're taking care of the kids.
That's part of what I was going to say is, I guess, I mean, the same amount of money is, it's going to be the same amount either way, but I, I don't, maybe just for future years, I, I don't necessarily know that I care to, to see it split as well. We're paying 50% of the officer at East because like, I mean, I don't know the numbers on where our residents actually go to which schools, but I feel like it's a blend and I, I guess we may as well just have a, you know, pay a certain percentage of a contribution towards both officers. Just a thought for future. Other question I had was way in the past, we used to also have, I guess maybe you would have called it a shared, an, an SRO that would kind of float between some of the other schools, where we had some, a part-time presence at the middle schools and elementary schools.
Elementary school, we did that.
Okay, was it just elementary? But I guess have we, do the high school officers stay always at the high school? Or is there any float time to other facilities if the district wanted that?
Yes, they do float, but they're primarily stationed at the high schools. And what they've done is they've broken up their duties to, to cover the feeder schools for those two high schools. So there's, there's an issue at one of the elementary schools and even the middle schools that they, they've still gone over there absent, you know, the contract to, to supply the deputy full-time at the middle schools.
Okay, very good.
Robert, at, at one point, there was a third SRO, I believe, that floated between the two middle schools that I believe, I want to say the school district paid for all of it and recovered the 12 weeks when they weren't in session.
I just know when I was a student, I, I had, there, there was an SRO at my elementary school and at my middle school here, so.
So let's just to clarify, this is the same, same agreement as last, last year and we just, you just changed the, the weekly rate.
Yes, to, to reflect the amendments that the county issued.
Okay, then, then I'll make a motion to approve the SRO contracts for a total amount of 135,887.40 um, out of the, uh, police fund budget. It is about $35 over budget. So I don't think we have to make a budget amendment right yet, right?
No.
That's pretty good budgeting though, I have to say, because we didn't have those rates at the time. So we hit it within $35. It's pretty good.
I'll support.
All right, we have a motion to support. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we're going to move on to consideration for approval of gym equipment for the sheriff department. Okay, Les.
Well, it looks like I'm up again. Today's the day here. So I, I'm here today to ask, uh, for your support and, uh, approving some funds for me to purchase some equipment for our gymnasium now. Uh, initially my plan was to have some equipment donated, but, uh, that didn't work out. I mean, COVID kind of changed the way gyms were doing business and those that had equipment decided that they could sell it for a lot more. There's a huge premium that was placed on the equipment. So the donation avenue did not work. And I, I know the township board is regularly charged with trying to figure out, uh, the community benefit. Uh, and, and I would offer that this is a community benefit. And I realize that it's, uh, I'm asking for a large amount of money for such a small minority of people, but I, I think it, it does benefit the community to have law enforcement officials showing up to your calls for service that are fit for duty and fit for life. I mean, we need to, we regularly encounter a lot of physical challenges and, uh, I'm just an advocate of it and, and I, I hope that you are too. And I, I realize it's not the township's responsibility to purchase equipment for us, but you gotta understand, most of us that are, were in the business, we had gym memberships prior to it, to, to COVID and when, when they closed down, that just, all that went away. And I mean, the state's open now, but we don't know for how long. And we don't know if the next pandemic may come and put us back into that kind of state where we just couldn't do anything. So, um, I, I've, I've done a lot of research for months and months. I had people come out and I did provide the board with three quotes, right? That I initially got six quotes, but throughout this process, I learned that there's, there's really no stipulations or restrictions on how they can market equipment. So the first three quotes, they were trying to market residential equipment as commercial grade. And I learned that, that wasn't, uh, what we wanted. We want, uh, equipment that'll last for, you know, decades. This commercial stuff will. And they have, it has lifetime warranties on, on the frame. It has like five-year warranties on parts and motors and a couple of years even on labor. As important as the cost was to me, I, I wanted to find, you know, local distributors that can also come and fix things if we needed, or just to help us out with just a regular maintenance. And then that's for, for regular, you know, minimal fee, you know, just a service call. If we needed to come out and tighten the belts and, and change a couple of pulleys. So they're, they're, the ones that I provided are all local and, uh, they, they were all knowledgeable and, uh, I, I, I think this will be really good for us. So again, I'm, I'm asking for you to consider, uh, providing me with the funds to make this purchase. And I'll take some questions now.
Okay, thanks Lieutenant. Um, by the way, he does have a nice gym down there. It is a nice one.
Yeah.
But it only has, it only has this little, uh, roller ball in there. Not real healthy. All right, so open up for questions. Go ahead, you guys. Ask some questions.
I had, um, I guess I'll jump in really quick. Uh, I had talked to Lieutenant Whitfield earlier today about trying to locate this in such a manner that, uh, perhaps the fire department and staff, uh, township staff could also use it while they're there. Um, just so it's kind of ma- maybe, uh, able to be used more universally. Uh, it sounds like the space that they've allocated for this presents a little bit of a challenge for doing that in a way that still, um, keeps secure areas secure. I look at fitness equipment a- as Lieutenant Whitfield said, I mean, it's, it's sort of a tool that they use and it's not something that wears out in a year or even five years. So, uh, you know, I don't know what the, the expected life of this equipment is, but, um, I, I would expect that it would last for many years to come with probably hopefully very little maintenance. So when you kind of split that out, I think the cost is, is fairly reasonable. And, uh, I, I would be supportive of it, but I would just ask that it, you know, if, if possible, uh, Lieutenant Whitfield and the supervisor could work to locate this in a way where during certain times of day, uh, other staff members could potentially have access to this as well. Um, you know, if that's at all possible.
I think that might be kind of tough, but what do you think Lieutenant? Where it's situated, I'm not sure how you could have access to someone else coming. It's right in the back. They would have to come through all of the staffing and room. I mean, you'd have to go through everything.
Well, what I, I mentioned to Sean is, well, that's not possible to allow people access in and out of the area. Then we just can't give out keys either because it's secure. But I mean, uh, an option that I came up with very quickly would be, I mean, it, it's going to be more money than I'm requesting would be to maybe on the backside. If we knocked down the wall and made the room bigger to accommodate more people, we could add a door on the backside for the township employees and fire department to access, you know, the gym. And then we could just take our, the door that we have and secure it and make it, you know, so it locks. So they can't come into our area, but that, that would be a solution for that problem, but it's not cheap.
Well, that's a concrete wall too. That, that's a, we'd have to be cutting a concrete wall. And then Michelle's office. I just got Michelle's big storage room built.
Oh, no.
Well, Michelle, that's gone. Now, I, and I didn't want to complicate this. I just thought it would be worth looking at in case there was an opportunity. So I didn't want to bog the discussion down tonight in, you know, with this, but I just thought I would mention it and my support does not hinge on this. It was just a suggestion that it, as you move ahead, that, that be an option that you guys at least consider.
I think it's a wonderful idea, Sean. Don't get me wrong. I'm just, the feasibility of trying to get someone into that area might be a little more, might be difficult.
John, I had a couple of comments. Um, I think that the two things that stand out to me that are, uh, positives about this, um, just regarding the equipment is that you're looking to go local because we, we want to be able to have that access to somebody possibly repairing it, um, if necessary. But also we just like to have things that are local and, and do business locally. The other thing that I liked regarding the equipment is that you're looking at the commercial grade. So I appreciate the reasons that you did in choosing that equipment so that it's not going to just, you know, be a glamorous residential like treadmill or anything like that. Um, I do not necessarily have a concern regarding making it available to fire department. I know there's equipment in the, in fire station one. There's equipment in fire station two. Um, and, um, I guess the more significant part is that what I like about having that, um, that opportunity for our deputies to use it at the, um, you know, at this location is that we're getting them to come either in early or late uh, or stay later, which means they're still within our community for a lot longer. So if there's some kind of emergency and somebody showed up to work, you know, half an hour, 45 minutes early to get their, uh, their workout, that, that increases our, um, our response for any kind of, uh, a catastrophic event of some sort. Nobody really wants to think of that, but having that available to our deputies, um, I think is really significant and important. So I'm supportive of, uh, your plan as submitted.
Good points, please. Real good points. Anyone else?
No, I just, I would just add that, you know, if this is, if this goes through that, I want to make sure less that your, uh, relay time gets a little, uh, quicker.
Yeah, we're going to need to put you through the test now. Good point, Chris, and then later. Yeah.
Well, COVID-19 turned out to be COVID-30 for me. So just give me a couple of months in the gym.
I certainly won't be using the equipment. That's for sure.
Hey, Les, do you have a preference? I know we have three bids and the low bid is, um, all pro fitness things in Malbonia. Is, is that something that you're willing to go with if we make that motion then? That's.
Yes, ma'am. He's, he's actually my preference. He, he displayed the most amount of knowledge and he was willing to help me even if he didn't get the bid. So he's been in the industry for a couple of decades.
Well, I'd like to make that motion then to, um, award the bid for the sheriff's fitness equipment at 19,946.45 to all pro fitness things.
I'll support.
You support that, Patty?
Yep.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to the resolution 202117 vacating a portion of water main easement for Kawasaki addition. Okay, well.
Carol.
Carol?
Actually, Lisa, so this just has to do, this is just something was required by the engineering review from Leslie's office and it is pretty straightforward.
The portion that's to be vacated is proposed under the new building. So they've made modifications to the site to extend water main and hydrants as necessary to meet the standard. So this is really a, a formal process just to vacate a section of water main that isn't necessary anymore for that site.
Be simple. Uh, anyone have any questions? Motion to be in order.
I'll make a motion to a, a resolution vacating a portion of the water main easement at the Kawasaki addition as presented by our attorney.
I'll support.
All right, we have a motion in support. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Sorry, I was a little late on the mute. That was a affirmative vote.
Got you, Chris. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to G. Uh, this is the resolution dissolving the local state of emergency to protect a public peace, health, safety and general welfare, COVID-19 and Temporary Open Meetings Act. Procedures effective August 1st, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support. Oh, go ahead, Patty.
Okay, we have a motion in support. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, but I do have a related question. Just, uh, if, if we'll be planning to continue the, uh, coverage with, with Merge Live of, um, all of the, the events as scheduled.
I'm thinking it's probably only going to be on the board meetings like we.
Yeah, I think the intent is to go back to where we were before COVID hit.
We only televised the board meetings.
No, I, I know we did before. I just, I think there's been value in having people be able to see the, the planning commission meetings and, and things like that. If, if we can look at whether that's feasible.
I'm not in support of that. I'm on it. Just, I'm not in support of that.
All right, well, that's talk when, uh, we get further in to this whole. All right, we're going to move on to our last item. Uh, these are closed sessions.
I'd like to make two motions. The first one is, uh, motion to move into a closed session to discuss pending litigation. Baker Family LLC versus Charter Township of Lion, Oakland County Circuit Court Case Number 10-78359-CZ in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.268E, as an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the township.
I will second that.
Okay, could we call, please call this by roll, Kelly?
Christopher Enlow?
Yes.
Lisa Blades?
Yes.
Michelle Cash?
Yes.
Um, Patricia Carcony?
Yes.
John Dolan?
Yes.
Robert Swain?
Yes.
Sean O'Neil?
Yes. I'll also make a motion that we move into a closed session to discuss pending litigation here on Valley Outfitters LLC versus Charter Township of Lion, Oakland County Circuit Court Case Number 20-179677-CK in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.268E, as an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the township.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion in support. Could you please call this by roll, Kelly?
Robert Swain?
Yes.
Sean O'Neil?
Yes.
Christopher Enlow?
Yes.
John Dolan?
Yes.
Michelle Cash?
Yes.
Patricia Carcony?
Yes.
Lisa Blades?
Yes.
Okay, we are now adjourned to closed session.
All right, Jacob? Do, do you see Steve's call in yet?
No, I haven't had anybody.
You see, there's a raised hand. There's a hand raised, isn't there?
Okay, so do we need to go into breakout session now?
Yeah, we need to move.
Yeah, we need to break out, but when you get him, you need to break him out into us. Okay, Jacob?
Okay. And is there anyone other than Carol who needs to be put in with the board?
Yeah. Um, Leslie and Brian.
Okay.
Everybody left.
All right, and I'm going to put you guys in there right now. And you'll be invited. Just gotta click on it. And you'll be invited. Just gotta click on it.
There she is.
And you guys are good to proceed. Michelle, you're muted. One sec. There you go, Michelle.
Okay, we are reconvening it back into open session. It is 10:17 PM and we'll do this by roll.
Do we need to just make a motion to reconvene?
Yeah, motion to reconvene. So I'll need a second.
I'll support.
Thank you, Sean. Okay. Patty Carcone?
Yes.
Michelle Cash, yes. John Dolan?
Yes.
Lisa Blades?
Yes.
Christopher Enlow?
Yes.
Sean O'Neill?
Yes.
And Robert Swain?
Yes.
Okay, we are reconvening.
I'll make a motion to direct the township attorney to proceed in the manner discussed in closed session relative to the HVO versus Lyon Township case.
I'll support.
All right, we have a motion in support. Could you please call this by roll?
Sure can. Lisa Blades?
Yes.
Christopher Enlow?
Yes.
Robert Swain?
Yes.
John Dolan?
Yes.
Sean O'Neill?
Yes.
Patricia Carconi?
Yes.
Michelle Cash?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I believe that concludes all the business of the township tonight, so we will consider this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.